I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are getting ready to celebrate St. Patrick's Day this Friday. This reflect on the contribution of the American community towards seeing here in Brunswick. Thank you.
Motion, Congresswoman Bex?
Second, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Madam Chair, has the correspondence have been diverted to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Madam President. The correspondence received by the City Clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments with further action.
Thank you. We don't have any ordinance on first reading? No, no, second reading. We don't have first readings. So the first ordinance, number one, an ordinance to a downtown development plan for, regardless of downtown, the development plan area in the city of New Brunswick.
Move the ordinance setting down April 5th, 2023, same date to be advertised.
Second, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Ordinance number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.16 Stopings, Landing, and Parking, Time Limit Parking, Parking Leaders, and Chapter 10.28 Residential Parking Permits, only in designated areas.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, April 5th, 2023, same date to be advertised.
Second, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. And ordinance number three, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 12 Streets, sidewalks, and public places, parks, and playgrounds. This is to add a new section, 12.28, 21st places, zero dog parks.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, April 5th, 2023, same date to be advertised.
Second, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor Ludwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. At this time, we're getting ready to go into the resolutions, going to the resolutions of the public comment. Do any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions regarding some other resolutions for us? Thank you. So are we getting ready now to, we are preparing to open the meeting to public comment or the resolutions only? You have up to five minutes. Third person, one time up. Members of the public who wish to address the council, please approach the microphone. Name and address.
Good evening. Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, Senator New Brunswick. Today, I wanted to ask about the liquor license transfer, number seventeen, on page four. What's the total price for the sale?
For the liquor license itself, $200,000.
$200,000, okay. And can you tell me who the principal is of the vine of New Brunswick LLC?
We have Alyssa and Anderson Hernandez.
Thank you. I think that's actually the only one I want. Oh, I gotta ask about this crane, number twenty. So Virgona Crane Company, they're the same ones who had a crane collapse, correct? In 2020?
Mr. Bellati, can you remind us of the same thing?
Okay. And as a result, the ordinance was changed. I wanted to understand now, are they going to be required to take down the crane, as in fold it up so that it's not extended when they go home for the night or the weekend? Because that's what happened last time, they left the crane in a position where it was vulnerable to the wind and a disaster happened on the weekend. Are they going to be required to do that as part of this permit?
Mr. Bellati, please.
Specific to this piece of equipment, that is not the case. This is a hydraulic crane that extends. They're going to make a pick, they're going to take the crane away and go. Mr. Cradaville, as we've heard, are referring to a whole different type of contact scenario, not the same as this case.
Okay. How long will the crane be on?
Approximately 24 hours or less.
Just a moment. I got, I got, thank you for that. And that's all.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, Dan. Someone said street. I would also like to just make a comment on on number seventeen. Due to where my question is, is this a bar, liquor store, or combining over bar and a liquor store?
I believe it's going to be a bar. That's those baggage goods.
Bar and restaurant.
Well, as I, I, I will, due to where I did run out of ink, I am going to print up the papers. No hard feelings against this owner at all, but with you, with this city council and the planning board changing a lot of these locations that are bars and allowing them to show, to sell, sell liquor, it's a big difference due to where Mr. Egan said, oh, you can't stop nobody from drinking. But when I bring the pictures over here, how about, wow, I say, ooh, if, if it's no, no problem, how about we say, out of all the things, these beer bottles in front of, and I just showed it the planning board, I just gave them all the pictures in front of school piles of big beer. And, 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 uh, Mr. Dominguez, he was the witness. And you say, ooh, you can't stop anybody from drinking, ooh, and how about I put your address up and then, ooh, let the people say, bring the beer over there to you. My point is, please, with these bars and turning them into liquor stores, the total different thing.
We're just waiting, we're just waiting for it to finish. I'm going to reply afterwards.
Like I said, it's a total, it's a total different thing where you're turning all these bars and they're able to distribute, walk away the liquor. Like I said, when I bring the pictures in and show them how they're putting on people's property, then if you feel it's comfortable, maybe I put your address and tell the people to come put it over there. But I will also continue, continue on due to where seventeen and eighteen and nineteen, wow, I see all these grants regards to the police department and do safety. Like I said, and believe me, I'm surely not the only one. I'm pretty sure you saw a comment today regards to police department. Please, what is New Brunswick, you, you say that it's to help, help pedestrians, due to where it's for highway, and then no talking and texting on the phone. Please, what are, what are these advertisements for? Just like I said, what a sign. Do you really think that this is going to scare people to control everything, or that a police department needs to get out and do what is being said? Due to where if I'm a pedestrian in a crosswalk already, what, use the police car, save me, and, and I have to walk right away?
Please, Danielle, I, I understand what you're saying, but these are strictly for us to accept the grant. So this is what you're saying. I know it is related, but it's not really related to the resolution.
It says, excuse me, number six says pedestrian safety.
Exactly. For us to accept the application of it and to accept the grant.
Well, well, like I said, all, 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 all these things, every time a grant goes to the police department, you keep saying, oh, it's going to be done, it's going to be done. I'm not the only one noticing. Like I said, you see the comments on, on, on Face, Facebook as well with the, with the police department. But come on, what's the use of you getting, receiving this money and the police department isn't doing anything? Do I really got to get a body camera to wear to show if I'm in right away for a pedestrian, wow, somebody, and they hit me on Saddam Street, what, the police car right there, he doesn't do anything?
Thank you, Ms. Danielle. Maybe we can discuss that a little bit more if you want to have a little bit more.
Why? Please, please tell me, if you're receiving a grant in number six that says state pedestrian safety, please, when is the police department going to start doing it? And another one due to where, ooh, five, no talking crackdown on texting and driving, wow, how many police officers do you see riding around texting and driving? Really, how can New Brunswick Police Department call theirself the law where half of your officers are breaking the law? If you don't want to hear the true truth, where you keep trying to make it look like, and I'm going to get to a point later on with that, due to where you keep making a point of like making excuses of what, what, this does not have nothing to do with it. Please, like I said, where is this money going? Because like I said, I'm not the only one in the public. You see the responses on, on Facebook. Like I said, some of them don't have the courage to come down here and speak up. But please, I'm not the only one that see what is New Brunswick Police Department getting paid to sit on their ass beef. Come on, it needs to be better.
I should language? Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions only? Name and address, please.
I'm not going to give you my name or address.
Then you won't be able to talk, believe me. This is something that is your name. Don't give me your address, just give me your name.
That rules.
Thank you.
I have a couple of points here. As you might know, Najee Seabrooks last year was killed in Patterson by the police department.
Yeah, I'm not here to, here, can you just speak to the resolutions?
It is relevant.
Can you tell me which resolutions are you referring to?
Yes. I will tell you right away what the resolution is that we're referring to. Resolution five, right? You're about to give our police department $14,000. And for what? A distracted driving crackdown? $14,000. You can't give $9,000 to Code Blue. You can't give any money to the house of some community on our streets. But you have no problem giving money to the police department for texting and driving offenses?
That's a grant.
This is a clown show. This is a fucking clown show.
That's a state, state grant, state grant. So, then you need to sit down because I need to hear your comments. I'm inappropriate. Sit down, please.
It's the truth.
Sit down, please, or I'm going to ask them to score you out.
You're going to get the officer to score me out?
Again, I ask you to sit down. I'm going to listen to your.
So your response to the continued killings by police officers is to give more money to police departments for texting and driving, right?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Score up. Thank you. Really appreciate it. No, no, out of the room.
Yeah, now I'm going. Don't worry.
Thank you. Don't worry. Anybody else on the resolutions? See you then.
I want everyone to know that there is economic and public safety component, and it is important for this council to address these issues. A year ago, I was in an accident by someone who was a driver. And when you are a victim, there are costs that have to be borne. And so we are receiving grant money, which means this is money that we don't have to pay. This is the state giving us money in order to cut down the increased number of accidents that have been happening in our city.
Thank you. Anybody else? Now we're getting ready to start with the public. You have five minutes. Tell your name.
Yes, my name is Danielle. And basically what my speech will be tonight, that'll be towards you, President Escobar, and Mr. Tom Valently, about, due to where I'm noticing, wow, especially you, when you're around certain people, you're not the same. Due to where I noticed that you're, I've always known you're a person who wants to help some, someone, due to where, just like the gentleman got back and said, how you, the homeless gentleman said, wow, you helped out with social services with him. And like I said, with, to Mr. Valently as well, due to where certain people, but one thing, I'm going to, I'm going to set an example to, to tonight, where it touches my heart, where how I told you, basically out of the five months, what it's like, due to where living as a black resident in New Brunswick for 46 years, due to where New Brunswick Police Department is nothing but a racist, along with our mayor Cahill, and you've seen someone else mention that on the, on, on today, on the article, we're hiring New Brunswick police officers. Look at the comment. For one thing, I'm here to tell, tell you, due to words about right and wrong. I haven't seen four people get bitten in their rear end from what, lying, wrong speech, doing the right thing, and making excuses. Four people in here bitten in their behind. For one thing, I, what did I tell you? I said, I don't care what any of you think of me, what I said, because I was speaking out the truth of my heart. And I'm going to say one thing, God is good. When I say blessings, I mean blessings. Wow, if any of you really realize from an injury that I've been going through for 20 years, out of the past five months, I used to stand on this wall, due to where I'll get the reminder when Mr. Egan made a joke with me, I was in so much pain. Oh, I think your pain got you paranoid. Then I left here two, two months, then due to where I had to get my nerves burned, burned. Please, if you realize, wow, did the Lord send me a blessing? Wow, I got my nerves burned February 23rd on the left side. I got my nerves burned March 9th on the right side. And it was, I, last year, I pulled up an article, ooh, please pray for me, that, why, that, I'm in so much pain. I tell you, it was like I got a blessing, due to where, like I said, the past five months that I wasn't able to sit down, like, wow, Lord, touch me with a magic wand. And to prove to you people, stop worrying about who you are around and do the right thing. Because like I said, God is in charge. Who, you do the wrong thing, or you will get punished. And like I said, wow, I will say to you, due to where I realized every time Councilmember Suzanne Socor Ludwick, and I can show you every video, whenever she was out, she was president, but you were in that chair, due to where, wow, how you were nicer, we were able to answer questions to Director Miller, wow, that was the time you said, ooh, with the public were there, we're not going to do anything, we're going to hold off on this resolution. The first time I ever seen, seen you guys do that, not take a vote, then, ooh, sometimes you didn't care about the minutes. Please, be yourself. Be, be yourself. Like I said, because honestly, it's going to come back to, to, towards you the wrong way. And I don't, I'm not saying that for a fact, I'm showing you, wow, God is good when you're good. Now, to you, Mr. Valently, please, and what I'm saying, the same thing to you, with regards to our workers, they're busting their behinds, the cost of living is going up. What, I'm paying $2,000 a month for where I am, time is hard. What did, I put up in the article as a, as a loving thing, I said, ooh, I'll be eating at Burger King, due to where now with these coupons, what, $6? What, a whole meal that's cheaper than a dozen of eggs. Give the workers a raise. Stop worrying about what, what, what people are thinking, because like I said, God doesn't like ugly. And believe me, like I said, with the blessing, and I'm still just like wondering, wow, did this really happen? How, how, how did this go away? Like I said, because I was speaking on the right thing. And like I said, it's a shame, you councilmember, there's no trust with you, where, wow, you don't even believe in doing anything right for the community. I do more than you do, any of you do up there. Like I said, do the right thing, and not, believe me, you'll wind up in the same four locations, where like I said, four of you in here have got bit and wind up something happening. And like I said, I'm not wishing on you, I'm just saying, why is it when you're around certain people, you talk different, you act different, this and that. And like I said, due to where the time where you said to me, ooh, we can't talk on 911, ooh, ooh, honestly, you weren't hurting me. That's going to regret, one of you up there that I see in the vision that I was trying to save.
Thank you, Delisa Danielle.
Do the right thing.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, anybody else who wishes to address the council?
There are no residents of Old Bridge. I thought, I think trust is a good point to bring up, Danielle. I think now that we're getting into the springtime, y'all know I'm here to talk about Code Blue and how miserable failure it's been this entire winter, going from dirty regular blankets to space blankets. Open the windows of people, beautiful, love it. But I think trust is an important point to make, because we're supposed to trust our, you know, public officials, like the public representatives to actually care for. The public, even the ones who are the most vulnerable, the most at risk, and the most sometimes difficult to reach, but that's the, you know, the assumed positions of a public official at the end of the day. I just think it's really funny when you go to the New Brunswick website under Community and Community Services under Homelessness, and it says, this page has recently been created and will contain information regarding Code Blue, dignity center shelters, and food services. And that's been that way since March 2021. So that's two years to get that. That's, it's close enough. You know, recently is a really relative term at the end of the day. So I understand that. Like it's, sometimes I run a little bit late, I'm 15 minutes behind, but it's actually 20. I get it. And so I just think, once again, this is a matter of trust. And I think as people, as working people, like we know, like at the end of the day, we can't trust our elected officials because we know, like so many of them are not there for the actual reasons to benefit each other. Like, we're the ones that actually have to benefit each other. Like, I go, like, I just came from talking to people about Code Blue before this. I gave out some food, talked to them. And it is so astounding to see how little of them like have an opinion of this, just because like of how poorly they've been treated time and time again when they're given like, it's the equivalent of like seeing a homeless person asking for money at the corner and offering them your half-eaten Whopper at the end of the day. That's what y'all are offering and saying, like, well, why are you saying, no, this is a perfectly good half-eaten Whopper? I think at the end of the day, what matters is like, as the people here, what we need to recognize is that like, they're not elected to like solve these problems. Like, they're elected because it's like the best of a bad situation, I guess, like when it looks like that on the polls. Because at the end of the day, it's just built to enrich the powers that be when it comes down to it. And the people that actually have to help each other, the most vulnerable neighbors, the person next to you that just needs help, is one another. So sure, this is a public comment, I'm supposed to address you all. But really, it's going to address me to everyone here. The fact is that like, we can't rely on this at the end of the day. I'm going, I pay out of my pocket. I make way less than sitting in New Brunswick, but it's like she was saying before, Danielle probably helps more than this council does. I know people that help more than this council does. So if we all do this shit together, we can make a difference to the most vulnerable people in this community, the people that are fucking hurting. And it's not just the people that are hurting, like, right now that are homeless. Oh, apologize. Apologize about that. Caught on the moment. But if the fact is that like, we are all so much closer to needing a Code Blue than being a millionaire in this country. That's just the nature of it. And at the end of the day, if we all work together to help stop these issues, stop the people who are most vulnerable from being like targeted and preyed upon, then we can help build each other out of it. Collectively, we can make a difference here. Because we see what happens when it's like individual issues put through like the eyes of an individual wanting political aims and goals. If nothing comes of it except for more rent, more bureaucracy with nice names put around it, like affordable housing. But what does affordable mean in a town that caters specifically to students who they're expecting to pay with loan money and the parents' money at the end of the day? That means nothing to the working person whose wages haven't increased in how long, who's now dealing with inflation at the same time. These are real issues that actually matter. And it's like, we know, like at the end of the day, coming to something like this is, oh, it's, it's asinine. It's throwing stuff at the wall. Really, it's proving that how asinine the system put in place is, so that we realize we can break out of it together. Collectively, this is what actually matters, is like working together to help the people who have worse in our society, so that we can realize, we can build up together. Because once you have people's strength, that's what really matters in this place. There are way more poor people than rich people at the end of the day, but they pit us all against each other in one way or another. And this city is a perfect microcosm of it in every way. We have students being exploited who end up kicking out working people who've lived here all their lives and stuff, because they get exploited by Rutgers. But at the end of the day, they're hurting other people. We all have an obligation to one another. I'm a former Rutgers student. I recognize that. My check probably went to like kicking someone out of their house. So I owe this city a debt at the end of the day. And that's how I look at this. We all owe one another a debt. And when we look at this side, we realize like how mounting that sort of social debt can be when it's like bleaching off of these people, how much it can grow. But we, when you recognize it, if you fight against it, if you, the little things, literally, you probably see like a homeless person at the end of the day, don't like just give them, ask them like, how can we help? And straight up, at the end of the day, little shit really does go, like it snowballs from there. Snowballs, sorry, little stuff. My fault.
Thank you.
First time. Thank you.
Anybody else? Same.
My name is Holly from Halliburton. I wanted to also just reiterate that the website about homeless services in New Brunswick has not been updated since March 9th, 2021. It just doesn't even have like zero information at all. It just says, coming soon. It's pretty wild. Also, last week, my sheriff was here, and he did say that he got a phone call about social services to follow up. He missed that one call, and he called back. He had to be, he had to run around and on hold for 40 minutes. No actual information or assistance given. Also, yeah, lately, again, we're outside several times a week, giving out food, talking to people. So people have been saying that the showers have not been open at the time. I, I can attest that myself hadn't been go. But the people we've been asking have said that those showers and that shower centers have not been open at the time they're advertised to be open. And, yeah, that's all I have to say for today.
Thank you. I just want to ask for, for the record, Mr. Muhammad, I did follow up with him. He has my number. He knows that if there's anything else that he needs to be done, he knows how to communicate with me. Anybody else?
I'd like to speak, please. Good evening, Council President, members of the council. Charlie Cradaville, can you tell me why is the front door to the building locked?
The front door to the building was locked during the COVID protocols when we were limiting access to City Hall to reduce the spread of COVID. We have relaxed those policies, but the front door is still in the last phase of our COVID laxation policies.
But we do have the back doors are open.
The back doors are open, and we have tenants at the back door who guide people to where they need to go.
If there's a signage in the front door indicating that people can go to the back
door? Last I checked, yes.
I just don't understand why. I mean, COVID can come in the back door, just like it can come in the front door, three years later.
If you don't understand what I said, you don't understand the reason. I can repeat what I said, but that's, that's what it is, Mr. Cradaville.
No, it's okay. Thanks. What's the status of the sexual harassment case against Councilman Fleming?
As we stated in the past, we are not making any comments at this time with that.
Are taxpayer dollars going to be used to settle this case?
We don't make any comments. Mister, Charlie, would you like to make a comment on what we said about?
We're going to deal with what's going on, but we need to discuss it anyway.
Well, I think you ought to discuss it because this is egregious. And first of all, he's a no-show, not just tonight, but he's supposed to be the Board of Ed liaison. He hasn't been to a Board of Ed meeting in many months, if not years. And he brings nothing to the council except this baggage. We're paying his legal bills, $35,000 so far to defend a case that has nothing to do with the city council. You should be ashamed of that. You should be investigating it. You should be putting an end to it. So this whole idea, we're not going to talk about it, is not acceptable. And frankly, if he's not going to do his job, he needs to resign. Can I attend tomorrow's meeting of the New Brunswick Historical Association?
Sir, would you like to do the update on the Historical Association or Mr. Cruz?
Sure, sure. The, the meeting will be held virtually, as it's been held. And there's more information available, you should log in if you'd like.
So I can attend now?
I don't understand what you mean by attend. It's a virtual meeting. You can log in, you can log in.
Okay. Because I tried to do that in January, and I was not let into the meeting. And you gave a, you know, remarks at the last meeting, saying that that was the decision that was made. Who made that decision? Not to let me into the January?
I don't know. I wasn't at the meeting, Mr. Cradaville.
Mr. Cruz, Mr. Cradaville, what is that you would like, anything new that you want
I want to know who made the decision to keep the public out of the public meeting? And Susan Malika is the chair, so I imagine she had something to do with it. Is she still employed by the city?
Sir, do you need, is Mr.?
She is.
Right. So somebody in the mayor's office, who's running this public body, made a decision not to let the public into the meeting?
I think that that's not the way we represent everybody.
No, this lady does not work in the mayor's.
I was going to say, she doesn't.
Oh, I apologize. What, what department or division is she in? I, I was under the impression she was in the mayor's office.
She's in administration.
Okay, so she works for you. Okay. Well, what happened was wrong. I said it last time. I'm glad that the things are being corrected. But you can't invite people to meetings and then keep them out of the meetings. That is emblematic of disingenuous behavior and also a lack of transparency. I don't know what important business the Historical Association is doing that they can't let the public witness it. It's unacceptable what was done. Who administers the website for the police department?
Deputy Director.
Deputy Director.
Senior Deputy Director Miller, do you have an answer to that question?
The police department utilizes the city website.
So who administers the city's website?
Mr. Burt.
It's a public information tool, President. Some department heads with access, but it is a public information platform.
Thank you. Okay. By, what does this public information platform mean? That's his responsibility as public information officer, correct?
Is that accurate?
Yes. Okay. Madam, Council President, what's your response to the revelation that police officer Hostway Plaza was suspended for eight days for intoxicated behavior that caused property damage?
I am not able to make a comment on something that I am not aware of, or I don't have any details, but I'm going to find out. Thank you. And I'll let you know if I have any comments.
Great, you can go to the city website and find it under Major Discipline. It's an example of why Internal Affairs is a joke, and I'll, I'll continue my comments.
Anybody else before me?
Brittany, Livingston Avenue, um, sanitation driver, excuse me, I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, but I just think that's interesting to hear, um, Mr. Cradaville say that, I guess, a police officer was intoxicated and suspended for eight days, but do you guys know that the city is trying to suspend me for ten days without pay? Um, saying that I'm making these guys call out and stuff like that, so I really can't see the medium of suspending me for ten days from what you think is going on, you really don't know what's going on, but a, a police officer can come to work drunk and get suspended eight days, and somehow I get suspended more than that. To the point where I have to go to the union to fight that. I think that's really insane. Seems like you're retaliating against me because I don't settle with your right privilege. So, um, I also wanted to bring this up as well, too, that, you know, do you know the city of New Brunswick does bulk pickups every Thursday and Friday? So last week, I saved one of these bulk lists, just for an example. Um, I know you don't wanna look at it, so I'm just gonna tell you what's going on. Um, that, the, this is just a bulk list from one day, which is two, two pages, sometimes it's like six to eight pages of bulk list, and from this first page alone, you can see twelve bulk items, six, 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 thirty bulk items, twelve bulk items. For an example, um, to throw an address out there, one-twenty Sanford Street, it's a bunch of businesses. You guys tell us that they're allowed to throw out eighty-nine bags, and most of those places are car detailing, and you know, we're not supposed to be throwing that stuff in the trash, the paint, the, 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 the car bumpers, they throw anything in there, oil, that's not type ten garbage, but you will require us to pick it up. And if we follow the rules and let you guys know, hey, we're not responsible, we, you know, the rules say we're not supposed to pick it up, you'll just send somebody else, um, who's a brown-noser to go pick it up behind our backs. And I think that's pretty weird. You guys set the rules, we try to follow them, and now it's like you're spitting in our face with the residents, because you're telling us to tell them it's only three bags per house. If we follow the rules, we don't pick it up, you send us right back out to go pick it up. If they live in the higher-end areas like the Dewey Drive area, the Rutgers Village area, they don't get tickets. But the inner-city people, you make them pay for tickets and go to court if they put out the incorrect garbage. We have other cities close to us, they don't do bulk pickups every Thursday and Friday, and they don't mix bulk garbage in with regular garbage. That's what's breaking your trucks down. But I mean, you know, what do I know about budget? So, um, maybe you'll fix your budget if you stop cramming bulk garbage with regular garbage. Like I said, other cities like Plainfield and Elizabeth, those are cities, they don't do bulk pickup every Thursday and Friday. Every week, we're picking up third, one house is thirty bulk items, that could be thirty couches, thirty mattresses, you never know what it is. And it's, it's gonna break those trucks down completely, whether you care or not, and then we'll be back down here, I guess, begging people that could care less that we need better equipment, when you're really breaking your own equipment down by assisting the city with picking up illegal garbage. We pick up illegal garbage every day, every day. You guys haven't done anything about it, you hire an inspector, that's nice, but obviously something's not working. There should be no reason why every Thursday and Friday, we have at least two to six to eight pages full of bulk items. That's ridiculous, and they're allowed to put anything out anyway, even if they get a ticket, we still have to turn around and go back and pick up what was considered illegal, and they had to go to court for it. It makes no sense. People put sheet rocks and toilets in the bags, and it's cool. A corner store that should have a dumpster, or schools that should have dumpsters, we're trying to fight in the middle of kids crossing the street and everything else to get the garbage backing up with parents, trying to pick their kids up or drop them off, that's dangerous, and you're not gonna see it until somebody's kid gets hit or a parent gets hit, and then what are you gonna do? You're gonna sit here and look like this and make it seem like you don't know what's going on, and then you don't wanna comment? We gotta wait till eighty Wednesdays for you to finally comment, then you don't comment, let's ask somebody from the audience, let them respond, it doesn't make sense, you guys are not being safe, and once again, you still don't give us the correct answers that we need to be safe for us and for the people of the city. We don't, we're not, we're, we know nothing of the contracts, still dangling around with that. You still haven't answered why we haven't received hazard pay, where we were told the money was just sitting in the bank. So I'm guessing you guys are collecting interest off that and doing what you want with that money, because we still don't know why we're not receiving that.
Thank you. Anybody else ready to take motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson? Councilmember Castaneda? Councilmember Gaskin? Councilmember Sikora Ludwig? Council Vice President Egan? Council President Hattler?